Let's move on to the information item. Chief Lucas, you are up with response to resistance and de-escalation training. Thank you for being here. Also, thank you Councilmember Moreno for bringing this up and being consistent about it. And whenever you're ready, please introduce yourselves.
Thank you, and good morning. My name is Keith Lucas, and I am the Assistant Chief. We'll oversee the departments, training, and employee development sections. I want to thank each of you for the opportunity to present the San Diego Police Department's curriculum on de-escalation. Today's presentation will show that the department meets, and in most cases exceeds, the state standards in the areas of de-escalation training, training officers on Senate Bill 392, which standardized the definition of deadly force in California, and training officers in the areas of cultural diversity and mental health issues. The state of California recently mandated every law enforcement officer receive four hours of training on de-escalation. Working closely with the San Diego County District Attorney's Office, the San Diego Police Department created a training program that more than doubles this requirement. Senate Bill 392 took effect on January 1st of this year and defined when a law enforcement officer could use deadly force. Although training was not required until 2021, the department understood the importance of this new legislation and elected to not wait until the following year. On January 10th of this year, the department began training officers. We are the first law enforcement agency in the county to facilitate and participate in this training. Additionally, our use of force policy has been updated to reflect AB 392, SB 392, pardon me. The San Diego Police Department will continue to meet with stakeholders in all communities to ensure we address concerns, maintain transparency, and make necessary improvements in training and our policy and procedures that will enable us to continue to provide the highest level of police service. Would also like to add that having grown up in D4 and being on the department for 32 years, I have seen positive progress in the subjects that we're presenting today. And as the Assistant Chief over training and employee development, I'm honored to hold a critical role in assuring that the San Diego Police Department continues to move forward. And with that, I'd like to introduce Captain Wes Morris, who oversees the San Diego Regional Law Enforcement Training Institute, otherwise known as the Police Academy. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and good morning, Madam Chair and council members and members of this committee. Again, I am Captain Wes Morris, and I do oversee the Training Division for the San Diego Police Department, as well as the Training Academy. With me is Lieutenant Kevin Wong, who oversees in-service training, which is the ongoing training for officers once they've finished the academy, and then also Sergeant Mike Bells, who is one of our core trained instructors in use of force and a use of force expert. So we'll go ahead and get started then. So, as the chief said, de-escalation is a topic at the core of what we teach and practice in our department, but unfortunately, it's not always understood, and sometimes the benefits of its implementation are overlooked because of its success. And in addition today, we'll also discuss some of the newest legislative amendments like AB 392, which we've already started teaching. Recently, our department was asked to provide information to this committee outlining the San Diego Police Department's commitment, training, and education in the areas of responding to resistance, de-escalation, interacting with the mentally ill, as well as human relations and cultural awareness. So as it refers to response to resistance and de-escalation, what are our goals? So, our goals are ongoing training to improve community relations, meet or exceed training mandates for California law enforcement, and to achieve voluntary compliance during enforcement actions. Before we go into all the things that we're doing right now as it relates to this topic, let's look back on where we've come and also look towards some of the growth that we've had. In the 1970s and 80s, the San Diego Police Department had more officers killed in line of duty than any other department in the nation. This made us stop and evaluate how we were doing things. That's when tactics like contact and cover came from and really was the beginning of this team concept. In the 1990s, the San Diego Police Department had more officer-involved shootings than police departments in 40 out of the 50 largest metropolitan areas nationwide. Again, we had to evaluate exactly what was going on. So the District Attorney's Office did a 25-year study and found, among other factors, that 78% of those involved had alcohol and/or drugs in their system. So in 1999, the Officer Safety Task Force was brought together, and it involved both sworn and civilian members. Each community member reviewed past task force work, engaged in patrol ride-alongs, attended academy training, and specifically sought input from the public. Through this committee's hard work and the information they gained, a more directed approach was developed. And in 2004, the San Diego Police Department implemented the Crisis Response Team Training Program, commonly called CRT, and the use of the then-new X-26 taser was used to improve response to crisis situations with the goal of reducing risk and injury. And this current philosophy of de-escalation and this Crisis Response Team reflects those recommendations today. So for reference, let's look just quickly at a couple fact points. So as you, most people know, San Diego City is roughly 1.4 million people. We have about 1,800 officers, and that's ever-growing, so that's good, but it leaves us with a ratio of 1 per 775 citizens. With that, in 2019, unfortunately, we did have seven officer-involved shootings. Reference that to Los Angeles, where they are three times the population at 4 million. They have roughly five and a half times as many officers at 10,000. Their ratio was lower at 1 to 400, but again, in 2019, they ended up having five times as many officer-involved shootings at 36. A little closer in size is Phoenix, where they are 10% larger in city at 1.6 million. Their officers at 2,900 is about one and a half times what we have. Their ratio is at 1 to 550. And in last year, they had twice as many officer-involved shootings at 15, which is a reduction for a series of highs that they had over the preceding years. So we've looked at some of the history, we've looked at where we've come, and even a quick comparative glance at some of the others, but what are we actually doing? So, let's look at our arrest and control, defensive tactics, and de-escalation. We're also going to look at PERT as a resource. We'll look at some of the training as it relates to mental illness and those with disabilities, and then, of course, our training as it relates to cultural interactions. So arrest and control and defensive tactics. So Penal Code Section 835A is a section that defines when an officer may use force. But as you can see on the screen, this is 834A, which actually is a very important section too to take into consideration when it talks about the duty of a person to submit to the arrest of an officer. And it states in part, "A person who has knowledge that he or she is being arrested by a police officer, they have a duty to refrain from using force or any such weapon to resist arrest." Now, this is not a charging section, this is a definitive section. Based on the person's resistance is where the charge will actually come from. The overwhelming number of contacts with law enforcement never involve any force at all. Even when arrest does occur, the number is very, very small. As was mentioned earlier, the officer's force is actually better described as overcoming the resistance, and our use of force policy describes it in that way. With this in mind, as we look at de-escalation, there can be no de-escalation without cooperation from the subject. What is de-escalation? This definition is it's a use of strategies and/or techniques to gain voluntary compliance from a subject in order to maintain control of an incident while reducing the need for physical coercion. These strategies and/or techniques are used to increase time and distance from the subject while attempting to establish effective communication. So de-escalation is always the focus and the ultimate goal is not to have to use force, but we can't jeopardize the officer's safety or the safety of others in the community because someone is not willing to de-escalate. So what are some of the things and the factors that we are looking for when the force is used? We've listed some factors here. So on the left, you see it could be the age, size, strength, and skill of the person, whether or not there's substances that affect their judgment, exhaustion, the number of people versus officers, any kind of injuries. Some other factors to think into consideration is the opportunity and time to provide that subject to allow for de-escalation, crowds and bystanders, the type of information the officer has leading up to the call, the location of where it occurs, any kind of weapons, and other available options. So based on all these factors, the officer will evaluate the force necessary at that moment to overcome the resistance. And you can see how someone walking through a crowded mall pointing a firearm is completely different than someone who is, say, holding a knife sitting alone on a bus bench. As officers go through the different factors, they're evaluating their options. They're using the appropriate option, I'm sorry, using that appropriate option is de-escalation. So de-escalation intends to stop a subject's resisted behavior or gain compliance. Used early and decisively, it may prevent a higher level of force being used. It reduces the risk of injury to the community, officers, and the subject. And then, when safe to do so, hands-on techniques are encouraged to gain control. Officers may encounter, say, an irate person, a domestic violence scene who is waving their arms and threatening to hurt someone. They may choose to immediately detain that person in handcuffs to prevent that situation from escalating and therefore a higher level of force being necessary. But what about those unfortunate situations where lethal force is used in de-escalation? So San Diego's Dr. Weber wrote, and the governor this past August signed Assembly Bill 392. 392 is an amendment to Penal Code Section 835, which we mentioned earlier. This bill defines the circumstances under which a homicide by a police officer is deemed justifiable to include when an officer reasonably believes, based on the totality of the circumstances, that deadly force is necessary. The bill affirmatively prescribes the circumstances under which a police officer is authorized to use deadly force to effect an arrest, to prevent escape, or to overcome resistance. It also addresses an officer's decision-making leading up to that use of force, when given time and opportunity to do so. When feasible, officers shall take reasonable steps in the pre-planning of responses to critical incidents, taking into consideration the need for additional resources, force options, and other available options. And we'll talk more about 392 and its partner bill SB 230 a little bit later. Let's talk about PERT. It's one of our large resources, and many have heard of it, but what exactly is it? Well, in 1996, a pilot project with county mental health was developed, and in 1998, PERT became a county-wide program. PERT, the psychiatric emergency response team. PERT responds to calls involving people who show signs of having a mental disorder, and it consists of both a mental health clinician who is paired with an officer who has had some sort of advanced training. It's available a variety of shifts, times, and they also provide some county-wide training, both three-day academy and a one-day academy. So let's also discuss what PERT is not, and this may answer some of the questions that sometimes come up. They're not the first responders who rush into a critical or volatile situation. If the person's in crisis, and especially if they pose a risk and/or are violent, the PERT clinician is not the one who will approach them. They may provide insight to the officer or the incident commander, but they're not equipped to contact the person by themselves. Once the situation is stabilized or has de-escalated to the point violence is no longer a factor, then the clinician can provide some real help. So that's the PERT clinician, so what kind of specific training to the officers are we talking about? So, again, we have academy training, and then we have what's called Advanced Officers' Training. Advanced Officers' Training is the recurring two-year training that all officers go through once they've graduated the academy, as mandated by post, while the academy training is just that. That's the initial training they receive while at the Police Academy. So they, 15 hours, communication skills, understanding of behavior cues for developmental disorders, understanding of mental illness and determining the proper interactions, as well as some resource information. The academy recruits are even given specific scenarios that they are tested on to show that they understand these different anchors and then how they respond. In fact, most of the training we do is scenario-based. Once they graduate, they will go to the Crisis Response Training, and this is the CRT training that we mentioned earlier that was developed back in 2004. So it covers such things, and we'll cover a little more later also, crisis management, mental illness, concepts of de-escalation, as well as practical application of de-escalation, resource gathering implementation, less lethal options, and then the communication skills. It's also provided or mandated for all newly-promoted sergeants or supervisors, that first line of supervision. So once they become a sergeant, they'll go through the training themselves. I personally went through the training in 2005, and then when I became a sergeant, I went through the training again. So it's not uncommon for somebody in a supervisory role to have it twice to get the most updated, most relevant information. Field train officers, the ones who are teaching the new officers out in the field, they have to go to a 40-hour academy, and four of those hours deal specifically with mental health training. They also, because of SB 29, they receive eight hours of training that has to be done within the first 180 days of appointment for six months. San Diego is a widely diverse community, as you know, and then it comes to how we interact with the community. We need to learn from that diversity and how law enforcement can be perceived differently, and also how we can help grow those relationships. So in the academy, we have various classes, including tactical communication, community mobilization, community policing, problem-solving, research development, crime prevention techniques, victim assistance, as well as victimology. The Advanced Officers' Training, they have tactical communication, and then we also, for the new officers, we do a community bus tour that's a day-long opportunity. We have effective interactions and training, and then emotional intelligence training. And this emotional intelligence, we also do training called command training on a yearly basis, which is separate from post, that we do just in-house for our department. This last year, all supervisors on our department went through a day-long course just on emotional intelligence training. So you can see that the training doesn't stop once you've just gotten out of the academy or you're brand-new. The academy also spends close to a week on community partnerships, the LGBT community, hate crimes, cultural diversity, racial profiling, and also learning Spanish for law enforcement. The Advanced Officers' Train also gets non-bias-based policing when they're going through their training. So here's just a graph to show you some of the core anchors that the post requires. So policing in the community requires 18 hours, but we put in 24. Arrest and control, which deals with practical application and de-escalation, we exceed that by 20 hours instead of the 60. We do 80, two whole weeks. The cultural diversity programs, we do 22 hours, one of 16 is required by the state. And you can see we go on and we exceed essentially in all these categories. So, once they do get out of the academy, I mentioned Crisis Response Team, and I kind of hit on some of the things, but again, once you graduate, it's 40 hours, it's a week-long. New sergeants are also given the training. Some of those topics are less lethal options, again, how to work with PERT, the communications and de-escalation. It says up there FOS, which is actually our Force Options Simulator, which some of you may have seen, it's a way of working through scenarios. And we work with Emergency Negotiations Team. And 10 of those 40 hours are dedicated to mental illness education and recognition. And this all started over 15 years ago, and we've been doing it since. As I mentioned earlier, we'll discuss AB 392 and SB 230. So recognizing the importance of this new legislation, the San Diego Police Department began talking to our partners to identify and develop a program to meet, and more importantly, to exceed what was required by law. The in-service training unit, in partnership with DA's office and PERT, developed a post-approved training to meet the mandates of both AB 392 and SB 230. The state mandated each department conduct a four-hour program, but recognizing so much more could be included, we'd made it into a 10-hour training to cover the concepts of de-escalation. We incorporated this training through adding an extra day to our regular AOT schedule, and we started that January 10th of this year. Because some of our department had already gone through training, this ROT cycle prior to January 1st, we're planning to bring those same people back this summer and give them this one-day training to show that we're going to have the vast majority of everyone just as quickly as we possibly can. So SB 230 stated implementation at a start by January 1st of 2021, but we started our program a full year ahead of schedule. We're the first agency in the county to do so, and we begin this training, and we are also working with our partners to ensure that this training makes it across our entire region. So as mentioned in the beginning, de-escalation is something we in the San Diego Police Department have focused on for years. In fact, within the first 100 days of Chief Neslait becoming the Chief of Police, he publicly committed to incorporating de-escalation language into our use of force policy. As the policy was going through the approval process, AB 392 was finalized, and the policy was amended so as to meet that bill's language. This new use of force policy is now in its final approval state and should be released in the next coming weeks, and then it will, with all of our policies, be published online for the public to see. So, as you can see through all this brief presentation, responding to resistance, de-escalation, interacting with the mentally ill, as well as our human relations and cultural awareness, are all integral to our training and how we strive for the best possible outcomes for our citizens. So we are now available for any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. We are going to turn to the public for public comment, and then we'll turn back to the committee members. So let's start with Savannah Duder. You have time seated by Kristi Hill, so you will have four minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairwoman Montgomery and members of the City Council. My name is Savannah Duder, and I'm a policy associate with the ACLU of San Diego and Imperial County. With AB 392 going to effect last month, we appreciate the opportunity to hear from SDPD about how they plan to comply with the law. AB 392 provides clear standard for when police officers can use deadly force. The law establishes that police can use deadly force only when necessary to defend against a threat of death or serious bodily injury, requiring police in California to use other techniques and resources besides deadly force whenever possible. Today's presentation focused a lot on the training aspect of de-escalation. In addition to training, it will be important to focus on what procedures and policies will change at SDPD. We know from the Campaign Zero report released last year that SDPD was not only more likely to use force against black people overall, but also more severe forms of force on average during these encounters. This includes the use of physical force, point firearms, pepper spray, taser, and impact weapons. Looking at deadly force incidents from 2016 to 2018, in 16 of the 19 police shootings, SDPD officers shot at the subject without first attempting to use non-lethal force to resolve the situation. While training can be one part of the solution, it cannot be the end of the conversation. It is good to hear today that the policy has been updated, but it is also really important to hear what exact changes have occurred and to have the policy come to discussion at this committee. A couple of observations about SDPD's previous use of force policy, which was the last version that we reviewed, is that it does not have a necessary standard included in the actual policy, and it does not define imminent threat that is consistent with AB 392. In fact, it does not define it at all. We share this information to underscore the importance of having stricter policies and not solely relying on training. In addition, most of the training has been in place before this year, and we still see these disparities. The standard set by AB 392 becomes empty if we do not enforce them. Let's ensure that we have a strong use of force policy in San Diego. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Tamara Becker-Virano, you are up next, and you have time seated by Betree McShane and Michelle Krug. You will have six minutes.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Tamara Becker-Virano, and I am the leader of an indivisible group called Change Beings with me, and we are partners with the Racial Justice Coalition. Political courage. What is political courage? It means doing what is right in the face of adversity. It means doing what is right in the face of formidable opposition, such as police unions. It means doing what is right even when you are running for reelection. The concept of political courage is actually unfortunate. Constituents should expect that their elected leaders do what is right without the temptations of conflicts of interest. But reality dictates that we recognize the few, and in today's world, it does seem to be the few outliers that exemplify political courage. There was great political risk to Adam Schiff to do the right thing in pursuing an impeachment hearing. Risk as an elected official, risk as a candidate up for reelection in 2020, and to the Democratic Party as a whole. It was that risk and the fortitude in which he held true to our country's values that inspired me to nominate him for the Kennedy Award in political courage. His actions reinforce that truth matters and that doing what is right matters. So how does that relate to a complete citywide ban to all neck restraints by the San Diego Police Department? Let's start with the truth. The truth is in the data. As you all know by now, the most recent study by Campaign Zero found that the San Diego Police Department is more likely to use more severe force against black people than white people. The truth is that neck restraints escalate police encounters, putting not only the alleged suspect at risk or in danger, but also the police officer. The truth is neck restraints increase liability to cities and counties. The truth is people die. Now let's talk about doing what's right for communities, especially our communities of color. The City Council and the San Diego Police Department exist to serve the citizens of this fine city. Doing what is right by the community means listening to those most impacted by its policies. It means learning from the past. It means knowing when to let go of antiquated and harmful policies that no longer meet the needs of the community. It means braving the difficult conversations and pushing back against the San Diego Police Department and police unions who are resistant to change. It means investing in training in alternative de-escalation techniques that ultimately increase the safety of our police officers and our fellow citizens when encounters occur. Doing what's right means saving lives. I'm here today to ask you to look at the truth before you and to do what is right by the community. I'm here to ask you to show some political courage and vote for a resolution to ban all neck restraints in San Diego City. Thank you.
Thank you. Bukie Domingos, you are up next. You have time seated by Darwin Fishman, so you have four minutes.
I'll use my first two minutes to say a few words. So we have been campaigning against neck restraints in San Diego and counties going on three years, and we have asked tirelessly for this resolution to be voted upon by City Council. We have five City Council members that have agreed to sign on, and Barbara Bree has refused to champion that legislature, kicking the can to Council Chair Monica Montgomery of this committee after promising us in the fall of last year that it will be spoken upon in January. It is February 2020, and Barbara Bree has done nothing. You were the last time in southeast San Diego at a school, and you, when asked, said you did not think the neck restraints should be gotten rid of. You pretty much lied to the Racial Justice Coalition and made empty promises, and you stand there and want to be reelected for mayor. I call that a shameful act, and I think it is unheard of what everybody is doing to Councilmember Montgomery, saying, "Oh, she should do this, she should do that. If she does this, we'll do that." You can also stand up alongside her and help her fight her battles, and that way, things will move along quicker than putting everything on Monica Montgomery's shoulders. That being said, I'm here also with Racial Justice Coalition members to remind SDPD of people that have lost their lives, and we're going to say their names in front of the City Council of those PLSN, Public Safety Livable Neighborhoods. We call on Alfreda Longo. He was killed in El Cajon some four years ago by SDPD. We also call on the name of somebody who was killed a couple of weeks ago in Oak Park, and his name was Toby Diller. And this was after the passing of AB 392 in southeast San Diego. This pretty much is SDPD taking a jump on AB 392. We call on the names of Furman Vincent Valenzuela, he died from the chokehold. We call on E.J. Smith, whose mother is standing right here, choked at a high school by a police officer, and then they denied it and said it was campus police. We also call on the names of others who have died or who have been subject to the chokehold and who are too afraid to come up and speak up. So we say their names. Alfreda Longo.
Alfreda Longo.
Toby Diller.
Toby Diller.
Toby Diller.
Toby Diller.
Desiree Smithson. E.J. Smith.
E.J. Smith.
Robert Branch.
Robert Branch.
And for all who have died in San Diego through police brutality, we say presente. We shall not stop. We will be back, and this is just the beginning of a long uphill struggle to have this resolution passed by City Council.
Thank you. I have John Wietran, the speaker, said you were part of a presentation, but I only have yours slip, so it'll be two minutes. Thank you.
Hi. My name is John Wietran. I'm a local activist and organizer here in San Diego, representing we, the people, also showing up with Racial Justice Coalition. I didn't think I was going to speak today, and I am, because apparently the item is related to AB 392, something I pushed very hard last year, even on a state level. I couldn't help but curious while, I'm conflicted now, because your presentation, what I actually truly believe in from the beginning, is that police need more de-escalation. However, one of you sly, and pardon me, it literally say, officers are not expected to play themselves or to the community in jeopardy to de-escalate. And then there are another lines that there can be no de-escalation without cooperation from the subject. That problematic for me right there. I'm conflicted because the whole idea of the escalation is for you to basically put yourself in a situation and try to figure out how to de-escalate a situation, calm it down, in order for, you know, for you not to use deadly force, right? But right off the bat, if that's how you start out your policy with, then you're not going to be going to be able to have that full intention of de-escalating, because you're going to be writing off right away like, "Oh, you know what? I'm approaching somebody, they're not willing to cooperate, so forget it. What's it going to do deadly force?" That not good enough intention for me. So I'm going to ask you again to revisit the policy and come from the heart, come from a real intention of really actually wanting to de-escalate. There have been so many lives already lost. We're talking about even choke-honed. Come on, you choke people to death. And it's not even far, far away. It was last week. These are incidents that you have to think about, the live, I don't know how you do it. I can't even think of taking my hand at anything, and you're doing it to people. Please, please revisit your policy. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll turn to committee members. Councilmember Moreno.
Thank you for the presentation. Last year, I requested that we bring a discussion on de-escalation training before this committee. So thank you to Chairman, Chairperson, I'm sorry, Montgomery, Chief Neslait, and Assistant Chief Lucas, oh, you're right there, for making this happen. There's currently no de-escalation policy in the SDPD policy manual available on the city's website, and I understand that the department is in the process of developing one. And I would request that when it is complete, that it comes back to this committee for a full discussion, along with a discussion of new training to implement it. I agree with your definition of de-escalation on Slide ten, the use of, this mic is really, excuse me, let me back away. The use of strategies or techniques to gain voluntary compliance from a subject in order to maintain control of an incident while reducing the need for physical coercion. But I am a bit concerned by Slide twelve. The title of the slide is, "Using Appropriate Options Is De-escalation." By appropriate options, do you mean physical coercion?
Yeah, there can be situations where that would be the case. Let me turn over to Mike. I know Sergeant Bells is one of our instructors on de-escalation in the academy, so do you mind?
Sorry. I would say, for instance, deploying a taser and aiming at somebody and using the targeting laser on them, giving them commands, and they comply because of the presence of the taser. Using that taser is essentially de-escalating from having to go to a higher level of force. So that would be the example of that.
Okay. Well, I would respectfully disagree with Slide twelve. The definition of de-escalation is strategies and techniques that reduce the need for physical coercion, not those that use physical coercion. De-escalation strategies give our police officers alternatives to the use of force, which allows them to do their job, I think, more safely and efficiently. There is a successful track record internationally for de-escalation policies and training. In the United Kingdom, much of the training for police officers centers around de-escalation strategies, and this training has been successful in reducing the use of force and improving officer safety. In the United States, de-escalation strategies have grown more prominently recently. In 2016, the Police Executive Research Forum, or PERF, published a report called "The Thirteen Guiding Principles on the Use of Force," otherwise known as the PERF thirty. Guiding principle number four was adopting de-escalation as a formal, a formal agency policy. And I, I think it's time for SDPD to adopt a formal policy on de-escalation, and at a future meeting of this committee, I look forward to seeing the proposed de-escalation policy and discuss how specific strategies and techniques will be incorporated into a new training effort to implement this policy. Thank you.
Yes, and we'll absolutely bring that back once the review is done with the AB, the changes that were prompted by AB three ninety-two. So I, I also have a couple of questions. I wanted to know what the option is. So when is a PERT team available? Are there specific hours that the, an entire PERT team is available?
Yes, yes, ma'am. A PERT team, again, is a, is a trained officer with a PERT clinician. It's a countywide resource, and within San Diego itself, we have twenty-eight that are essentially working, I think it's six AM till midnight, in different commands, and they're, they're an available resource across the city. Now, because it's a countywide resource, there's even times where we can reach outside the city and use that same resource and vice versa. We will sometimes help out our community partners outside the city.
So, between the hours of midnight and six or so, then PERT clinicians are not available at all, or?
Correct.
Okay. And when we make those decisions as to what divisions will have, how do we make the decisions based on what divisions will have the teams?
The, there's, there is allotted, I, I'm going off memory here, but basically, they're allotted based on calls for service. So if you have a, a higher number of calls for service that would necessitate a PERT clinician, more PERT clinicians will be assigned to that command.
Okay. When we come back, I would like to see what those assignments look like per division and what those calls are per division. I just want to make sure we're evenly spread out. I also, eventually, this is, I know even a couple of years ago, the calls for PERT teams went up tremendously, and I want to see how those resources have matched that. There, we have a lot of issues in the, in the wee hours of the morning, and so when people are not available during that time, that's also a concern for me. So I know we have to deal with the county on that issue, but it would be ideal to always have someone that has that expertise when it is needed, no matter what time it is. I also am, I would be very interested when we come back with a policy to see what the changes are post-AB three ninety-two. I want to see what, how our, how the paradigm has to shift for that, because the standard is now different. I wholeheartedly agree with Councilmember Moreno that we should really be focusing on de-escalating the problem as much as possible. And I also would like to see a list of what, per this PowerPoint, what exactly are our de-escalation techniques? We just mentioned a taser. We have folks here that have been advocating for a ban for chokehold. I want to see if, if, right now, we're, we're talking apples to apples, that it is, is the carotid restraint considered a de-escalation policy per the police department? You know, is that on the list? We, we need to see that so that when we're talking to each other, we're, we understand the definitions that we're using, because we may be using a different definition than officers do. So we definitely need to get on the same page with that. I know that the SB two thirty allocated up to four hundred fifty thousand for the Commission on Peace Officers Standards and the training, the post-training, to strengthen guidelines and sets aside more than ten million dollars for officers to attend these courses. Is that, how is that being implemented in San Diego? Do we have access to any of that funding?
I have to check on the actual, where the funding's coming from, but I do know that we've already started it, and we've got classes scheduled for the majority of the year, at least for San Diego. I know that we are also in the process of working with some of our community partners to provide the training for the other cities as well.
Okay. Okay. And just, my last question is, I want to know if we have ever done an analysis, or do we have any evidence that implicit bias training alone reduces racial disparities in, in police practices? Because we do focus on training a lot, but we don't necessarily have measurables to see how effective that is. In fact, the only thing that I can think of is the first SDSU study that, that came back after the press kind of got involved and did the PRA on the back and forth between the researchers and the city, and it came back that officers didn't think that the training alone was very effective. And so that's the only thing that I can think of that would show, or show us that, how officers feel about training and what effects it actually has. So I don't know if we have looked at that. Have, have we at all looked at any results per training? I see Captain Jordan shaking his head. Maybe he wants to take this one for the team.
Yeah, I know he, Captain Jordan has done a lot of research in all those different issues.
Okay.
I'm not sure if this is on, but the state of California has looked at that, and I've been in presentations with the Department of Justice and as well as the Racial Identity Profiling Act, you know, committee, the board, the RIPA board. As of right now, we have yet to see a definitive study that shows a correlation that implicit bias has changed behavior anywhere in the nation. That's not to say that, you know, that research is still being done, because that training is still being done, but we are looking for confirmation, and I just haven't seen a study that's yet shown that. Again, relatively new concept, there's a lot of people studying that, and social psychologists and a lot of other folks spend a great deal of time trying to make that connection, and then, once you have that connection, what policies can be modified to potentially achieve change? So it's still being looked at, still relatively new, but I get to see a definitive research analysis show that.
Okay. Is CPE looking at that at all?
CPE, Center for Policing Equity, would absolutely be the experts in that. They would know if there's been any research that has shown that, and we would defer to them actually to say, "Hey, you know, this is the latest research showing." But as of right now, the DOJ, as of, I think, last year, has said there hasn't been anything at a, at a RIPA board presentation.
Okay. So we definitely, now that we have these, these different bills in place, we, we need to start looking at that, and, and based on those results, we do need to, I believe, need to have stricter policies that, in, in oversight, really always helps. So I do appreciate this presentation for bringing it forward and, and letting us know what the process is to merge the AB three ninety-two and everything that the state is doing into what we do, do locally, and so we'll continue this conversation. And thank you for being here. Thank you for all you do.